November twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-two. Planning and Development Committee meeting November twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. Consideration of applicable bylaws with appropriate council authority. Under councils' meeting rules, no other new business can be considered at this special meeting. We will begin the meeting with the city clerk calling the roll for attendance at today's meeting.
Members of council, I will call your name. Please indicate your presence. Councillor Thor. Present. Councillor Fortini.
Hi, Peter. I'm here.
Councillor Power. Does not appear to be present at the moment. I'll come back to him. Councillor Maderos.
Here.
Councillor Keenan.
Here.
Councillor Pleschi. Present. Councillor Barar. Present. Councillor Vicente.
Present.
Present. Councillor Santos.
Present.
Present. Mayor Brown.
Present.
Present. Councillor Power. Is currently absent. And Deputy Mayor Singh is present. There are ten members present, Mister Chair.
Thank you. Moving on to the second item, approval of the agenda. We are now at item two. Approval of the agenda to the clerk. Do you have any updates?
Through you, Mister Chair. To members of council, yes, there are a number of updates for tonight's special council meeting agenda. In regard to item four point one, which are various delegations regarding the fireworks recommendation from Committee of Council, we have delegate number fifteen, Sandy Graywall. We have delegate number sixteen, Ramon Sahota. Delegate number seventeen, Azad Goyat. And delegate number eighteen, Bhavesh Bhatt. Under item four point two, which are delegations regarding Committee of Council recommendation regarding election signs, we have a second delegation from Azad Goyat. And under item four point five, which is correspondence regarding the Committee of Council recommendation on election signs, on the revised agenda which is published online, there is correspondence from Jackie Everett. And there is additional correspondence that was just received prior to the meeting from Cody Vatcher that will be distributed to members of council after approval of the agenda.
Thank you. We have a motion moved by Councillor Pleschi and seconded by Councillor Thor to approve the agenda.
I think Councillor Vicente would like to speak.
Thank you very much, Mister Deputy Mayor. Thank you, Mister Fay, for reminding me that I have added, for the purposes of the public record, a submission that was made to the province of Ontario with regard to Bill twenty-three, the legislation that we in the planning meeting today have expressed our desire to stand in opposition to. And I would like for the record to contain that as a piece of correspondence and additional information for members of council to look at and for members of the public to view. I'd also note with interest that while AMO has been an organization that has represented municipalities here in the province of Ontario for well over a hundred years and advocating on behalf of municipalities, I would note that the province did not allow AMO to do its delegation at committee. And that is a first in many ways, and it's unfortunate. And so we do have our work cut out for us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And so that will be added. Also to the clerk, the motion we had talked about, I'd like to withdraw it at this point at the approval of the agenda. Does that make sense, or?
So through you, Mister Chair. Perhaps that motion can be dealt with during Committee of Council recommendations?
Okay. If that's easier. Okay, no problem.
So Councillor Vicente's additional communication will be identified as four point six on the special meeting agenda, and it'll be distributed to members of council shortly.
Okay. Thank you. So we have a motion moved by Councillor Pleschi and seconded by Councillor Thor to approve the agenda. All in favor? Anyone pause? Hearing none, the motion carries. Item number three, declaration of interest under the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. We are now at item three, declarations of interest under the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. Does any member have a declaration of pecuniary interest under the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act for any matter to be considered on today's agenda? Seeing none, the clerk will so note for the meeting minutes. Delegations regarding, sorry, our next item is four point one, various delegations regarding Committee of Council recommendation, CW three seven six, two thousand and twenty-two, regarding a prohibition on fireworks within the city. We also have correspondence under item four point three for consideration with this matter. After the delegations, council can consider the committee recommendation. I will ask the clerk to call forward the following delegations.
Through you, Mister Chair. The first delegation on this is Navrit Kaur. Is Navrit present? Please come forward. You have up to five minutes to address city council on this matter.
Good evening, everyone.
Just come forward.
When you have one minute left, I'll let you know. And then it's five minutes in total, okay?
Okay.
Thank you, Navrit.
All right. So the whole thing is about banning the fireworks. Well, Diwali is a festival of light, and it brings everyone together. That's the only day when every one of my cousins and my family can be together and then enjoy a thing that everybody likes. And with the whole ban situation, I agree, it does have the impact on the dogs and the cats. But because of that, we cannot just fully ban the fireworks. Because the thing is, I don't, personally, I'm not a fan of dogs. But I cannot say, oh, hey, let's just get rid of all the dogs if I don't like them personally. So with the whole ban situation, I don't know how it gonna work with us when this is the only day when we go out and then have fun with fireworks. But we do also follow the protocols and everything, like how to dispose them, how to dispose them. So we could probably educate everybody in how to dispose them, how do you use them in a better way so that it does not harm the society. That's all.
Thank you.
The next delegation is Jas Karen Binder. Jas Karen present? Jas Karen Binder is not present. The next delegation is Harman Daliwal. Harman Daliwal is not present. The next delegation is Aleem Kanji.
Thanks, Peter. Peter, would it be okay if I raised my hand to change to the next slide? Because I don't have control of the deck.
For sure. Thank you. I'll let you hand those out.
All right, Aleem. Thank you. Your time begins.
Thank you. Thank you, Mister Chair. On behalf of the CNFA's three thousand members, including Brampton's forty vendors, two hundred employees and their families that work and pay taxes in the legally permissible fireworks industry, thank you for taking the time to listen to the industry tonight. Lack of education for consumers on the safe use and selling have not sufficiently had safety training. These have been pervasive industry issues. What happened at Ray Lawson, what happened at Sheridan, what happened in the Gore plazas was categorically unacceptable. We take these issues seriously, and the CNFA has long accepted this as its mandate and has implemented programming to address this. One such program that we have launched in partnership with the city of Brampton is our extensive Be a Good Neighbor program in English and Punjabi across the city, on billboards, on newspapers, radio, social, ethnic media, and on the web. Be a Good Neighbor materials are provided to the retailer outlining the federal government approved safety rules as set out in the Explosive Regulations Act by Natural Resources Canada and local bylaw requirements and provided at the point of sale to all fireworks users. We have also partnered with Brampton on their training and education programs and implemented our own vendor certification and employee training programs at no cost for anyone to take. We have spent well in excess of the amount council is planning to allocate for communications around a fireworks ban to educate people on the safe use of four thousand legally approved products by the government of Canada. As a councillor told us in June in this chamber, people are going to abuse fireworks and are going to continue to do so no matter what, end of quote. While the statement may be true, the CNFA strongly believes a continuous education and not reactionary enforcement and a blanket ban is the solution to the problem before you today. Brampton already has a ban that doesn't work. It is the only one of its kind in Canada on fireworks that are three meters or higher. We have seen the videos and activity in Brampton, and clearly people are not following the rules. So what exactly will a blanket ban that restricts use and sales achieve? Residents will drive to other cities apart, purchase fireworks the same way they come to marijuana, for marijuana here in Brampton. Others will simply buy online and have products delivered by a dozen-plus Brampton logistics companies that deliver parcels. Basing your decision tonight on a changed.org petition by an unnamed resident, which anyone on the planet can fill out, is akin to making a decision without any facts or evidence. Many thousands of signatories to the petition do not even live in this city. Basing your decision tonight on the seven hundred and eighty-five complaints in two thousand and twenty-one, where only seventy-eight fines were handed out, and eleven eighty-four complaints in two thousand and twenty-two, where only ten percent of the fines were given, proves that the city's enforcement is reactionary. Through a request that CNFA made after the June meeting in this council chamber, we received on Friday a list of data records of complaints from two thousand and twenty-nine to two thousand and twenty-one in Brampton. I've got it with me right here. The cluster of complaints around similar streets and by individuals complaining multiple times begs the question, is this in fact a citywide issue? Brampton also received sixteen thousand complaints across all areas in two thousand and twenty-one. Fireworks represented less than five percent of the total. Twenty-two percent of complaints were attributed to loud music and parties. Based on council's decision tonight to ban fireworks based on complaints, will council impose a blanket ban on loud music next? This is the clear implication of what is before you. Separately, Brampton received forty-one thousand complaints on parking last year. And while parking fences are in force, it would be absurd to suggest a blanket ban on bad parking behavior and the drivers that commit such heinous acts. As Councillor Fortini put it perfectly in this chamber in March, you're always gonna find people that don't listen. The fifty-six bylaw officers in Brampton will all tell you that complaints they hear most about are loud music.
Leave me a one minute.
Dogs barking, thank you, loud mufflers, on vehicles and snow removal. All of these complaints are well ahead of fireworks, by the thousands. Banning fireworks tonight, based on complaint numbers, would be akin to banning dogs, we heard that earlier, music, and people who don't remove snow. I am certain you will agree this is beyond absurd and is completely nonenforceable. The bylaw officers in this city will also tell you what Councillor Thor said at the November twenty-third meeting. And what he said was Brampton does not have enough officers. Councillor Thor is a hundred percent right. And this begs the question, what is the plan for the tens of thousands of people that call in on New Year's, on Canada Day, on Diwali, and on other days? How are you going to enforce this? Is the plan to ask for help from other cities, as Councillor Keenan publicly stated on CP two four at three P M. today? That is the unintended consequence of a blanket ban. Put quite simply, a ban will light up your phone lines, and they will flood your email boxes in a significant way. Let me end by saying this, if I may. The fireworks industry is asking you to do what council unanimously consented to in March and in June in this very chamber. Refer the item back to staff, consult with the community that is here, talk to the industry, let's work together to find solutions. I think you're going to create a hornet's nest by having more and more and more complaints that are not enforceable by city staff that are gonna create a bigger problem for the people of this city.
Thank you.
Thank you for your indulgence.
Thank you, Aleem. Do any members have any questions or anybody? Please, anybody online? Nobody has any questions?
No questions?
No. Thank you, Aleem.
No worries. Thank you for your time.
Yeah. Going down the list.
The next delegation is from Tom Jacobs.
Sorry, can we get what? Did you say his message? One second. The fourth? Do you put it in the chat? Yes. Should we just keep?
Councillor Keenan, it's Peter the clerk. Do you have a question on the delegation that just presented to council?
No, I'm okay, thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Go ahead. Your time starts now.
Thank you. Okay, so I wanted to start by asking a rhetorical question. Do any of the council believe that licensed merchants in Brampton are selling illegal fireworks? So that is fireworks that are over three meters in height. So if any of you do, let me address this first. The process of licensing for the sale of fireworks in Brampton is one of the most rigorous in Canada. So I can tell you that the dozens of merchants that we sell to wouldn't dare jeopardize our license by selling contraband. So I understand this is gonna be anecdotal, but the sample group is a very large a number. When any merchant comes to us to buy wholesale, they always inspect the products we offer them to ensure that they don't exceed three meters in height. So this is my longstanding experience, as I say, with dozens of merchants. So these merchants want to only buy and sell fireworks that are permitted by the city of Brampton, by the bylaw, which are fountains, ground spinners, sparklers. So these fireworks are not the problems of, they're not the cause of any of the problems that we saw during Diwali. So a ground spinner, for example, is a tiny little light. Anyone ever seen one? So a fountain, it crackles and pops like a campfire. So these items are so small and unobtrusive that if you were to use them in your backyard, your neighbors would probably not even realize that you were having fireworks. The items that cause so much trouble were items that are already banned in Brampton. They're aerial items that are over three meters. So we all saw the footage and the aftermath of the worst instance of use. This activity was totally disrespectful to the community. It was irresponsible, it was unsafe, and it was criminal. And our industry does not condone this behavior for one second. We'd like to see much stricter measures to deal with this so we can prevent it in the future. But what I don't understand is how a blanket ban will stop illegal activity that's already happening in Brampton. So I don't think the purpose of the ban is to stop all the good families that would celebrate for Diwali, which is an age-old religious and cultural tradition with the low-level items. The ban is not trying to stop people. Purpose of the ban is not trying to stop people from playing with fountains and ground spinners. So I don't think these families' rituals are causing the public nuisance, right? With their low-level items. And they're not disturbing the peace, and they're not littering the streets of, or other people's property. On the other hand, the persons who are behaving horribly and engaging in illegal activity are certainly not using the low-level items that have been, that are right now legal in Brampton, the fountains and ground spinners. Eighty-five percent of the available fireworks in Canada have already been banned in Brampton. So I don't understand how removing the ability of good and decent people to celebrate their holiday with the fifteen percent of remaining products, which are referred to in most jurisdictions as safe and quiet fireworks, I don't understand how this will stop the terrible behavior from people who are using illegal items and who have no respect for the law. So I repeat, the perpetrators of the heinous activity we all saw on the news were using items that are already banned here. So let's talk about the practical aspects of enforcing a ban. I'll try to be quick. The Soviet Union built a wall in Berlin in nineteen sixty-one because four million of the seventeen million people in East Germany had fled to the West. So I'm not intending to suggest here that Brampton is communist or oppressive. So don't get me wrong, the point is that Brampton does not have a wall, but I think it's gonna need one. Mayor Bonnie Crombie of Mississauga recently stated publicly that fireworks bans are impossible to police or enforce. And I can understand why. If certain coveted goods are legal in the jurisdiction next door and freely available, then I don't see how you're gonna stop citizens from going outside the city limits to grab them. And in fact, it's even easier these days. Why drive your car when you can just order your fireworks online and have them delivered to your door? So all you're doing is creating a major black market, and by taking away safe and quiet fireworks from people who have enjoyed them reasonably for years, you're not gonna stop them from coveting them and using them, but you're going to drive their activity underground, and you'll still have the remaining people who are using the illegal fireworks, just as they are today. How will the city stop illegal selling when it already seems disinterested in policing the hundreds of stores that sell without a license? If you say the answer will be to increase fines, then I ask you, why is this not being done now? Why hasn't it been done already? Why are we waiting? We need to focus on clear education and stronger penalties for unacceptable and illegal activity. This is about changing behaviors, because otherwise you're going to need to build a wall. In closing, I want to say that our industry is comprised of good corporate citizens, long-term stakeholders. We have an interest to promote safety, responsibility, so that people can celebrate with fireworks safely. We need to work with the city to more effectively promulgate regulations regarding fireworks. We also ask the city to work with the CNFA so short-term licensed merchants like grocery stores can get certified and provide education. And already eighty-five percent of fireworks are banned in Brampton. The problems are not coming from the fifteen percent that remain. We have many proposed solutions, and we believe it's not fair to punish the good for the actions of the bad. The city will not solve anything with a blanket ban, which is no good for anything. So we ask you to convene with us in the end and work with us to solve these issues together. We need to change behaviors and put an end to the action of those who do not respect their community or the law.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do any members have any questions? Do any members online have any questions? Okay, moving along.
Next delegation is from Gervir Singh. Gervir? Gervir present? No. The next delegation is from Logan Johnston, Brampton resident. Logan is online, and we'll just bring Logan into the session. Logan, you can unmute your mic, and you have up to five minutes for your delegation. A warning will be provided at one minute left. Please proceed.
Awesome. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Please proceed.
Awesome. So yeah, Tom and Aleem already touched base on a lot of the stuff I was gonna talk about. I know ever since I was a kid, fireworks or something, my family and I always used to celebrate different events, Victoria Day, Canada Day, New Year's. I definitely don't think it's fair to do the blanket ban on everything. It's definitely unfair to everybody, considering there was such a small amount of actual complaints. Really not much else I have to say. That's all.
Thank you. Thank you. Do any members have any questions? Seeing and hearing none, we'll continue on.
The next delegation is Sargun Singh. We'll move on. The next delegation is Nitin Anand. The next delegation is Sean Singh.
Hello, Gervir.
Hi, Sean. You have five minutes, and you'll get a warning at the one-minute mark.
My name's Sean. I've been born and raised in Brampton my entire life. I grew up in all, I've lived in several different wards prior to myself becoming a fireworks salesman. Been selling fireworks since I was eighteen years old. I started the business when I was at the University of Waterloo. But long story short, thank you for giving us the opportunity to share our voices and concerns about the impact that the ban is gonna have on the residents of Brampton. I do implore you to reconsider, as this is a rash decision that takes away from such fond memories of the next generation due to the actions of a small amount of users in Brampton. Like Tom pointed out, most will continue to buy online, or they'll go to neighboring cities to be able to light them and watch them enjoy, as it's a federally mandated product. Each municipality is free to choose what cities, like what, if they're allowed to sell or not, or what they're allowed to sell in the case of Brampton. I do feel like people will continue to buy, and a lot of the problems that we're having is not products that are sold in Brampton. They're products that are purchased outside in other municipalities and brought into city limits. I don't condone what was happening. I do agree that it was a little excessive, but there should be a chance of redemption this year. I feel like there's a lot of different than other factors, like two years of COVID, people being indoors, a lot of people don't know a lot of the rules. And I see that education is key. So I celebrate Brampton bylaws, taking approach online to create tech talks and save fireworks handling. This can easily be expanded to further educate. During campaign times, a lot of people, a lot of the MPs were going on programs, culturally, ethnic-based programs. You can use these platforms and these connections that are already made to further expand education and to stop what happened in the year past. Because I was reading a lot of comments, like even on the petitions that you guys are speaking of, a lot of people don't mind fireworks. It was just an unusual activity that resulted in late nights. Others were upset the fireworks being done in driveways and parks, which again is like lack of education, because you're supposed to be doing it in your private property, you're not supposed to be in parks. And a lot of the problems were caused by fireworks that aren't even allowed in Brampton. Clearly, the word is out that something wasn't right this year. Everyone's aware, so we should have an opportunity to correct that. Celebrating Canada Day, Victoria Day, and New Year's, Diwali is about family fireworks. So I implore you once again to reconsider and help us create memories with our families and we can pass that along to our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Do any members have any questions? Seeing and hearing none, I'll pass it back to the clerk.
Next delegate is Hamid Kaur. Hamid Kaur. We'll move on. The next delegate is Sherman here. Sherman here. The next delegate is a delegate that's online, Siobhan Chin. Siobhan, you are in the session. You have up to five minutes to address council. I'll give you a warning when there's one minute left. Please proceed.
Hi, good evening, everybody. I'm just a concerned member of the public, and fireworks has been an essential part of my life. And I'm deeply disappointed that anybody would want to ban the use of fireworks, especially when we do, when we are allowed to use it, it's always for an occasion. And to ban it would just be ludicrous. Going forward, as we're now coming out of COVID, it's the first opportunity that many people are getting together, and Diwali specifically, has been canceled for the last two years. So I understand that it may have been a little bit bigger than we ever had. We both have never experienced COVID. And I think that it would be a great shame and to the children, to the families, and to everybody around who enjoy the celebrations, that for a few people to be uncomfortable for a couple of hours on one particular night, to ban a whole product for everybody else, clearly, there was thousands of people who were enjoying the product on that night, not just in Brampton, but right across Toronto, right across Canada for that matter. So to think that just now, all of a sudden, we want to ban this is completely absurd. That's what I have to say.
Thank you. Do any members of council have any questions? Seeing and hearing none, we will continue.
The next delegation is Rup Bawa. Rup Bawa. We'll move on. The next delegation is Sandy Graywall. Sandy Graywall. Move on. The next delegation is Ramon Sahota.
I'm here to speak on the behalf of Ramon, so he's unable to meet. So thank you all. So thank you for listening, one thousand four hundred and ninety-one people. But I'm here to talk about on the behalf of other fifteen or twenty thousand people who enjoyed or who celebrated Diwali. So I think that banning is very easy. Sometime if we see complaint, let's ban this thing, right? It's an easy option, but the thing that we need to be a regulator, like if we see there is a shooting in school, so we don't just ban the school, we just keep it more regulated. Weed is dangerous in many ways, but we legalized it, we regulated it. Alcohol is dangerous in many subjects. It caused many road accidents and many other things, but we are keeping it legalized and legal, right? We are keeping it more regulated, and we're keeping aware the community by having more and more awareness about drinking and don't drink and drive. So I think that banning is an easy option for us, but let's make it more regulated. Even we compare that twenty thousand people might be celebrating the Diwali. Only fine, we have two complaints, the late-night fireworks and the cleaning of the plazas. That can be solved very easily. So that can be done very easily by more wearing and more educating the people. So I request everybody to let us celebrate the Diwali. It's just like the Christmas, it gives a chance to get us together, Hindu and Sikh families and many other. So I also request in the New York, they are from two thousand and twenty-three, they made it this to a public holiday. So this is very big celebration, and this is the only festival that we enjoy. So I request everyone to keep this regulated so we can enjoy it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Could you state your name for the record?
My name is Harry.
Harry?
Yeah.
Could you also just sign in on the back? Behind you, behind you.
Where?
Behind you, behind you.
Okay, sure.
Thank you. Do anybody have any questions? Hearing and seeing none, we Hearing and seeing none, we will continue with the delegations.
The next delegation is Azad Goyat.
Thank you very much. I, along with thousands of residents, don't support fireworks ban. Why? This meeting time now is nine twenty-six. It's Monday. People are working. This special meeting was not needed to call this time. The special issues need to be addressed in a more specific way with a more involvement of the community institutions. Diwali is itself a festival of lights. Diwali is celebrated at home with friends, relatives, neighbors, in safe and score manner since many, many decades. No doubt, residents must follow the bylaws of allowable heights permitted and timings of letting the fireworks. This is unfortunate. These bylaws were violated. Rather than banning fireworks, city must ban selling of illegal fireworks and strongly monitoring the selling points. Selling points are not monitored. They are selling anything what they want. Brampton is a city, free city, do whatever you want, wherever you want. Okay. No sale of illegal fireworks mean no bylaws issues, no noise, no pollution, everybody happy. City must allow only environmentally friendly fireworks. City even allowed fireworks on Diwali. It was not before. Why it was done and allowed to do the fireworks at Diwali? Consider those points before banning. Even the residents, the reasons more complaint this year due to the election celebration, don't blame Diwali. Blame the celebration of elections. Many of you are sitting, you, your supporter, they lead queues. Don't blame only Diwali. Blame yourself too. Before banning, consultation is needed with the community, with the residents, and religious institutions. City must come for enforcement more next year, and I'm sure the situation will definitely be different where banning would not be needed at all. Late-night special meetings are not needed. Residents must give advance notice so that their voice can be heard appropriately. This is not that time. No. Whatever the economy do, we don't follow. We don't support. One million population, fourteen hundred complaints. See the ratio. Don't say that it was in twenty eighteen, this was just number, and twenty twenty-two is just number. No. So many factors, not one. Ban on car thefts. Ban and register the police report on hated signs. Ban and police report on hated signs all across Brampton. You have seen all. Nobody spoke a single word about the hated signs across Brampton all in twenty twenty-two. Not at one occasion, two occasions. Where were your voice that time? We need fully fledged university in Brampton for education for our children rather than banning the fireworks. We need fully fledged police station in Ward nine and ten rather than banning the fireworks. Better healthcare we need. This is the time to work. Don't work for your personal interest. Work for the residents, for the betterment for the residents, for my Brampton. Brampton first, residents first. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Azadji. Does anybody have any questions? Hearing and seeing none, we'll pass it to the next delegation.
The next delegation and last registered delegate is Bhavesh Bhatt.
Hello, my friends. Many families celebrate Diwali, and this is their biggest festival of lights. Here in Canada, we celebrate Diwali by inviting friends and family and do fireworks in a safe and secure environment for many, many years. This council, without the public consultation, have taken reckless decision, which did not consider the feeling of the community and its outcome. I understand that some of the people broke the law and did not follow the law. However, due to some individual or group made mistakes, you cannot penalize the whole community. I request council members to withdraw that decision immediately. I also request council member to do wide range range of consultation with temples, guru dwaraas, religious places, public and community in large. After the consultation, city should come up with a plan to tackle the issue of the fireworks. Our city is our pride. Council member must not take any decision in hurry. I have question to council. What is the urgency to ban the fireworks? Yes, next Diwali will be next year in November 2023, while there are other big issues facing by city. Thank you.
Thank you. That completes the delegations.
That completes the registered delegations.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion moved by Counselor Barr and seconded by Mayor Brown to receive the delegation's correspondence. Is anybody opposed? Hearing and seeing none, the motion carries. Moving on, council, we can now consider committee recommendation CW three seven six, twenty twenty-two. Do any members have questions or comments regarding the recommendation? There anybody online? Okay. Thank you. I have a motion. Nobody message. All right. You can say thank you.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Just want to say thank you to all the members of the public that delegated here in front of council. Thank you for taking the time. I know it is a very late meeting on a Monday, but you took time out of your day to come and delegate on an issue that you feel is important to you. Your delegations are well received. I assure you that councillors have thought through their decision on this issue, and we've heard loud and clear even throughout the election campaign about this issue. Just to be clear, there's some, I'm just gonna summarize from all the delegations here. The next occasion that the city would have allowed fireworks is New Year's. We're doing this proactively, and we're looking at ways to find how we can better our enforcement before New Year's, so that we don't see, I would say, illegal use of fireworks anymore in our city. And we will continue to find ways that we can do that better. I do not believe that the period of COVID was the cause of a lot of people, the outpouring of people celebrating with fireworks, because even during COVID, we did see fireworks across the city. In fact, you know, banning the use and sale of fireworks in our city would do a lot better to improve the air quality in our city on a lot of days throughout the year, in light of, you know, such a devastating pandemic as the COVID, which is a respiratory illness. So seeing that and hearing the voices and opinions of countless residents throughout the election campaign, we've carefully thought about this, and we look forward to, I still look forward to seconding this motion, and I thank Counselor Keenan for putting this motion forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody online with any questions? Okay, I have a motion moved by Counselor Keenan and seconded by Counselor Thur to approve the recommendation CW three seven six, twenty twenty-two. All in favor? Okay, the motion carries. Our next item is four point two, a delegation from Tracy Pepe regarding committee of council recommendation CW three eight nine dash twenty twenty-two regarding election signs. We also have correspondence on item four point four regarding the matter. After the delegation, council can consider the committee recommendation. Welcome, Tracy. You have five minutes.
Good evening. I have a question before we get started. Considering I was just watching the federal inquiry on the use of the emergency act, I was really impressed with the public forum. Was there a public forum put forward on this particular matter? Was there a town hall? Was there any form of discussion, meetings, information sent out to anybody? I'm just asking because that will delegate how I proceed.
Well, this decision was made at committee of council, which is public, and now we have council to ratify.
No, but I mean, that decision, that meeting information, given the timeframe, how many people were notified about this situation?
So every agenda is published online, as you know.
Yep.
That's normal process. Was anything additional done outside of the media awareness on this issue? No, we went through the regular process.
Okay. All right. So we are talking about the Charter of Rights and free speech. That's the objective of this. Council does have the authority and the duty to upload and update the bylaws, by sure, but council does not have the authority to interfere with the Charter of Rights. Me, as a property owner, I have the right to choose if I want to or not want to have something or a sign on my lawn, as I am a taxpayer. Under the Charter of Rights, my freedom of speech, if it is not hate speech, is protected by federal law. So considering our democracy, we as a nation just celebrated November eleventh. I have the right to vote and express who I choose to support or not support in any election, federal, provincial, municipality. If I choose to place a sign on my lawn, that's my constitutional right. And that is also the rights of many residents that I do not believe are understanding that this has actually been put forward committee. As I do agree, we need to update the bylaws, and I think there's a consistency that's coming in where we have a lack of bylaw officers. I would like to add some recommendations to this discussion. I would like to ban all election signs for the incumbents, as they have and will have established themselves in a public forum. But because you are public officials that are voted in every four years, I would suggest that you allow new candidates to add signs to the properties as long as there is a written consent from the property owner. This benefits the residents, but this also allows for a free democracy when you're in the voting process for a municipal election. If council thinks that that is unfair, I would ask that you amend the bylaw to ensure that any student residents or individuals who cannot vote in this country, who reside in a rental house, do not have the authority to give permission to put a sign on a property, and that the property owner has to put it in writing. Now, in this particular case, if a candidate puts a sign on a property such as this, I would suggest you increase the fine to a thousand dollars. The one thing that is consistent that is coming up is the bylaw enforcement. I just sat and listened to the fireworks. Knee-jerk reactions are not solving problems. What needs to solve problems is a plan. And if I look at the bylaw officers, we actually have on average five officers per ward on a twenty-four-hour enforcement. How is that ever going to solve any of these problems that you as council, but we as residents are dealing with? I think the issue should be that we are putting forward a recommendation of increasing bylaw officers and offering support. During Christmas, it is known to be an abnormal busy time for merchants. However, merchants need to hire more staff, adjust, and meet the demands and expectations of the consumer. It's simple. So why don't you put forth a motion to solve the problem versus a ban? Considering we had a shortfall in the budget because we did not have enough people to support the election campaign, I'm wondering if we could not recommend, you have four years in front of you, to hire more bylaw officers for the potential election coming up and putting this under the election budget versus city budget. I also would recommend that you increase the fines. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And I believe we have an additional delegation from Azad Goyat. Before I let Azad come up, does anybody have any questions for Tracy? Anybody have any questions online? Okay, Counselor Fortini. Do you have questions for the delegation?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll wait for the, thank you, just a quick.
Okay, so now I'll ask Azad Goyaji to come, and please, your delegation.
Thank you so much. I think Nen Brambut sent an email for delegation on this issue too. That was overlooked. I don't know.
We can.
We can add him on.
Thank you. Ban on election signs. Let me ask, who did the sign wars? While putting the bans, a lot of sign wars, public properties, signs, who are doing that one? Who placed the illegal signs? Who placed the illegal signs? Not the people. The candidates are responsible. Many, including you. When you are doing illegal work at firsthand, putting the illegal sign at public property, you have no right to sit on the elected chair. Follow the rule yourself first. Give the example and come to the city hall and show the courage. You are the one who followed hundred percent the bylaws which are framed by city of Brampton. Rather than banning the election signs, encourage and educate the certified candidates to follow sign bylaws. Place legal signs. Increase hefty fines for illegal signs on public properties. If you want to ban, ban on community hated illegal sign across Brampton. You didn't talk anything about that. No one talked. Many thousands illegal hated signs were placed on public properties, and hated sign is a crime. Hate is a crime. Why the city, why the residents has to complain basis? No. It's all around Brampton. How many residents will be busy to complain each and every sign? One intersection, you'll see ten signs. How many complaint I can make? You are wasting our time. You are not following the bylaws. You are not strict. If the council is strong, no illegal sign, hated sign can be placed on public property. Not a single sign. There is a number there. Who put that sign? There is a number. Call that guy. You put illegal sign on public property, please go and remove. Otherwise, we will charge you. It's crime. Hate is a crime. But no one talk. Everybody is quiet. All council is quiet. Don't kill the democracy. Don't kill the residents or voters' right. Residents have choice to put the election sign on their property. Residents have a choice. Don't force them not to put the sign. Rather, regulate the sign bylaws and enforce. Only the enforcement, proper enforcement and proper education is the only key to safeguard the democratic process and democracy of the people. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any members have any questions? Okay, you can, questions are just for council, but because you said you emailed your delegation, you can come. Yep, say your name, and then I'll let you delegate.
Sorry, through you, Mr. Chair. So we're gonna have to reopen the agenda with a two-thirds vote as a delegation.
Okay. Is anybody opposed to adding, reopening the agenda and adding the delegation? Hearing and seeing none, the motion carries. Please just state your name and then begin.
Well, thank you very much.
Can you state your name, sir?
My name is Nen Brambut.
Okay.
And I live in Bramptonist, and thank you for allowing us on this quick request. I just have two quick issues I would like to address to the council, and that is very important issues. The first, which is related to the motion which is carried by the council for banning fireworks, and the second is the sign, sign, okay, banning a sign. Okay, let me speak on the banning a sign. To have a problem, it is a natural process of any citizens living around the world. Why the city council has been, you know, elected to serve the citizens of the city or area or the country. Banning is not at all the solution for administrative issues. solution for administrative issues. If, if this is the culture has been developed, and this is the process has been followed, without having a proper consultation of expert, publics, which are the real stakeholder of the city, and also the people who really are associated with that cause, then you will do not have the real outcome which the people of the citizen of the city wants. And therefore, I personally request that such a banning a sign, it is a right to demonstrate yourself during an election, but banning a sign on the public property, that right should be given to the owner of that property. And not, it should not be decided by the city council. And I add to the one of my delegates presented, it is a contradict the citizens of charter and rights, and it is not allowed while the city is banning something on the private property and asking to do something which is not in relation with the city. Therefore, I giving, again, thank you very much for giving me time, and just request you to rethink about your decision. Bring some strict, some strict laws, or something, the penalty, or do some, a proper way of timing the signs. Like today, you see, some of you are still elected councillor today, and I can guarantee send you the picture, there are still sign over there. So you are not questioning banning the people, you're questioning yourself, being in councillor, are you following those laws? Who gonna pay this penalty? How many signs are there? What are the penalties? And banning those decisions gonna affect your current science dealer there? Those things need to be think before something is being bring to the council and the decision has been taken. So again, I request, and thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Just sign your name behind you. Yeah, just sign your name. Thank you. Do any members have any questions? Seeing and hearing none. I have a motion moved by councillor Plessey and seconded by councillor Vicente to receive the delegation and correspondence. Is anybody opposed? Hearing and seeing none, the motion carries. Council, we can now consider committee recommendation CW389 2022. Do any members have questions or comments regarding the recommendation? Okay, anybody, okay, we have councillor Fortini on the speakers list. Councillor Fortini, the floor is yours.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Is our legal department or legal online? A couple of questions.
Legal department. Is there?
They are legal. Is it legal?
Yeah.
Okay, just a question. So I received a bunch of things that, today, that on the signs, and I know I supported it, but Vaughn tried to do the same thing, and Supreme Court overturned the rule because it's a freedom of speech. Do we, do we know that? Are we going against a ruling that we have no authority to do? Do we know?
Do we want to do this in open session, or?
Oh yeah, well, it's all in public, I understand.
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. It's Colleen Grant, councillor Fortini. I believe council has already been provided with some legal advice in closed session with regard to this issue, the reports, I believe, were attached at the last committee of council meeting.
Okay, and the other thing is, you know, do we, do we have to declare conflict on that? Because, you know, we have our own signs with all the fines. Is it a conflict for us? Everything's gonna be okay? Because I did support it, but everyone end up in any issues, you know, going against our own fines at the end.
Councillor Fortini, that's item, it's separated.
Well, it's all about the signs. Anyway, I'd like to maybe, yeah, I, like, I supported it. I just seen this thing coming about the Supreme Court that's against the freedom of speech. So if a resident puts a sign up, what can we really do at the end? That's all I worry about. So, you know, I think we should have had a little bit more time on this. It was not in a hurry, because all these things I'm getting now happened in Vaughn, and they overturned it. So we might get someone filing this, so just to be prepared. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm done. I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Fortini. Do any other members have any questions? Online as well? No? Okay, councillor Vicente.
May I speak to the motion?
Yes.
Yeah, and thank you councillor Fortini and to the city solicitor for the comments so far. Thanks to all the delegations for providing your view. It's been certainly my view, and the view of councillor Santos, that we have a major problem when we run elections here in the city of Brampton, where infractions of the election sign bylaw are numerous and have become a major issue. It's, it's an expensive undertaking to market oneself using signs, given that we have social media, and we have, any person has the opportunity to speak directly to residents and to advocate on their own behalf for their candidacy. And when I hear comments made by folks who say that we're reducing the opportunity of a non-incumbent to be able to promote themselves, I would argue that the incumbents have a greater advantage because it's easier for them to be able to pay for signs, given that they may have an advantage, whether, whether it's fair or not, to do fundraising. I remember my first campaign, it was very difficult to pay for the signs that I had to pay for. And, you know, the, the person that I ran against had a natural advantage. If, if signs weren't a factor, that may have played an important, that may have been a game changer for me. And that wasn't the case. But at the end of the day, the city of Brampton regulates signs. All signs are regulated in the city of Brampton. So I just want to put a question through you, Deputy Mayor to Staff. Do we in fact regulate signs of all kinds here in the city of Brampton?
Through you, Mr. Chair. It's Elizabeth Corazola, currently acting director of the building division, to respond to councillor Vicente. Yes, the city does regulate all signage. Certain signs are exempt. However, signage on residential properties in general is certainly not permitted by this sign bylaw.
Right, and that's an important factor. And what I've always found fascinating through you, Deputy Mayor, is the information session that the clerk's office holds in advance of every election period. And signs generate more questions and generate more confusion than any other issue that a candidate has to deal with. Where can I place a sign? Where can I not place a sign? How large is the sign, et cetera? And folks really have a hard time understanding what they're allowed to do, what they're not allowed to do. And even though the clerk may explain something 1,000 times, folks still don't get it. And they will put signs on boulevards, in areas where they're not allowed. And so, they're just not allowed, in general, in those areas. Now, under the, under the current system, you're allowed to ask a resident to place a sign on a lawn. But under the system that we're proposing here, we're asking the resident to put a sign as part of their, perhaps on a window, or in part of their building. So we're not banning signs, per se. We're offering a different means for candidates to be able to offer a sign to a resident and have it displayed in a public way, so that they can support the candidate that they choose to, to have as their choice for the election. And so, I think that this is a worthy step. I think that we have found the right balance in terms of trying to eliminate the visual blight that comes to the city, number one. Number two, the fact that folks just don't get what it is that they're allowed to do and what they're not allowed to do, and break the sign bylaws all the time. I would remind of the number of infractions that we did see committed in the last election. Staff time, the money spent by candidates, the money spent by the city to attempt to enforce and to manage the situation, the environmental impacts, all of these factors. But I think above everything, the costs and the inconvenience to residents, who I will tell you, in wards one and five, where councillor Santos and I ran, are constantly being harangued by signs that are placed illegally on their property. They never asked for the signs, but because there is an election, the signs are placed everywhere. And so, I hope that folks understand that this is not a ban, but instead, it is a way for us to still allow residents to voice their support for a candidate within their property, on a window, or on some other part of their building. And I think that that is an effective way for them to express their support for a candidate. And for myself and councillor Santos, we are, of course, very supportive of this, and are looking forward to see how it impacts, and how it provides for a better way for residents to support the candidates they choose. Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
You were given the opportunity during the delegation. Now it's councillor's turn.
I was just gonna ask a question.
Yeah, no, you can.
Through you, Mr. Chair. There are, there is an opportunity for public question period at the end of the meeting.
At the end.
A question could be asked then.
Okay. Thank you. Do any other members have any other questions? Anybody online? No? Okay, thank you. I have a motion moved by councillor Vicente and seconded by councillor Brar to adopt the recommendation CW389 2022. Is anybody opposed? Hearing and seeing none, the motion carries. Moving on, 4.3, that was part of item 4.1. Looking at 4.4, that was part of, with the delegation, item 4.2. So I guess we'll move on to committee reports.
Through you, Mr. Chair. First, there's 4.5, which was the added correspondence that was received as well, with regards to the delegations under 4.2. 4.6 is the additional correspondence from AMO, from AMO president Colin Best, requested from councillor Vicente, so that can be considered with item 5.1, committee recommendation regarding bill 23. So we are on 5.1 now.
Okay. Our next set of minutes is item 5.1, committee of council, which met on November 23rd. The committee recommendations are here for consideration and approval. The full committee minutes will be presented to the December 14th council meeting. For receipt, I will now pass the chairs to the respective section chairs, in order of consideration during the committee meeting, to lead council in the consideration of the committee minutes. Just need two seconds. Okay. Perfect. Starting with councillor Santos, who chaired, Chair councillor Santos, who chaired the community services section, I pass it on to you.
Thank you very much, members of council. You have the community services section from last week. Before you, do any members have any further questions regarding that section? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Chair, back to you.
Thank you. Moving on, councillor Santos, you chaired the legislative services section. I'll pass it on to you.
Thank you very much, members of council. You have the legislative services minutes. Before you, do any members have any further questions regarding that section from last week?
Yes, I do. I, I'm looking to, oh, sorry, apologies.
No, go ahead.
Councillor Plessey first.
Please, Deputy Mayor.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Councillor Plessey, followed by councillor Singh. Councillor Plessey.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, at that last meeting, I had deferred or referred to delegation, video delegations to this special council meeting. I still want to be able to have those delegation, those delegations heard, but I need to, I think, refer them to next committee, so that we can hear them on that committee agenda. I know the clerk's office has already pivoted to provide video delegations to the public and to members of council prior to, to hearing them live in, during a council meeting. So I want to thank clerk's office for, for doing that. But I'd like to refer those to the, those two delegations to the next committee of council. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, councillor Plessey. There is a referral for those video delegations to go to committee of council on December the 7th. Councillor Singh, does your question have to do with this referral, or is it separate?
No, it's, it's separate.
Okay. Do any members oppose the referral to the video delegations to committee of council on December 7th? Seeing and hearing none, that motion carries, and it will be referred. Thank you, councillor Plessey. Councillor Singh, you are next.
Yep. I had put a motion on to remove the, sorry, to let go of the invoices for sign infractions, which I would like to omit or delete. We will go ahead with the voices.
So through you, Chair Santos. So councillor Singh is requesting that recommendation CW390-2022, which is the committee of council recommendation regarding the writing off of invoices for the 2022 election sign infractions for municipal candidates, be deleted, correct?
Yes.
So we'll require a seconder.
Sure.
Councillor Plessey will second the motion.
Okay, thank you very much, councillor Singh. And Mr. Clerk, I think that's clear for you, that we will, that we will proceed with the invoices related to those sign infractions as per originally scheduled and planned. Do any, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Seeing and hearing none, that motion carries. Thank you very much, councillor Singh.
Thank you. And I will pass it on to councillor Thur, who chaired the economic development section. Seeing that there is no items on, in my section, any questions from fellow councillors?
No.
Seeing none, any questions from the public?
No.
Seeing none? Thank you, and I'll throw it back to the chair. Thank you. And as I had chaired the corporate services section, I will ask, is there any questions from my colleagues regarding corporate services? Hearing and seeing none, I will pass it now on to councillor Vicente, who chaired the public works and engineering section.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Deputy Mayor, just want to ask if any members have any questions with respect to the public works and engineering section from committee? Seeing none, back to you.
Thank you. Council will now consider a motion to approve the recommendations in its entirety after all section chairs have concluded their summaries, and any resulting council questions or debate has finished. Members of council, you have before you the minutes of committee. Do any members have any questions or comments? Seeing and hearing none, I have a motion moved by councillor Brar and seconded by councillor Plessey to approve the committee recommendations. As amended, all in favor? The motion carries. Moving on to 5.2, which is the planning and development committee, which met earlier tonight. The committee recommendations are here for consideration and approval. The full committee minutes will be presented to the December 14th council meeting for receipt. I will now pass the chair to councillor Plessey to lead council in the consideration of the committee minutes. Councillor Plessey.
Members of council, you probably don't have before you the minutes from council, from planning, that were emailed shortly after that planning meeting, from a couple hours ago. Are there any questions pertaining to the minutes? Seeing none, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I pass it back to you.
Thank you. I have a motion moved by councillor Plessey and seconded by councillor Thur to approve the committee recommendations. All in favor? Okay, that carries. Thank you. Moving on to 5.3.1, is a request for a motion regarding the decline of fabric care, dry, dry, clean industry and support for the Get Close With Your Cleaner Again campaign. This item was referred from the November 23rd committee of council meeting to allow for consideration of a similar industry support motion, as was considered in the city of Mississauga. Do any members have any questions or comments? Councillor Plessey, I'll pass the floor to you.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. So I had asked at that time that we tailor a motion Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. So I had asked at that time that we tailor a motion to reflect, uh, Brampton's support for the dry cleaning industry. Have we, I haven't seen anything come through. It's on the screen. Thank you, Peter. I'm happy to move this. Looking for a seconder.
Councillor Vicente will second the motion. I have a motion moved by councillor Plessey and seconded by councillor Vicente to approve the motion. All in favor? The motion carries. Our next item is five point three point two. Correspondence refer to tonight's special meeting for further consideration. Do any members have any questions or comments regarding MTO Greater Golden Horseshoe Transportation Plan? Who had referred this? Do we know?
Through you, Mr. Chair. It was just referred to tonight's meeting. I think there was discussion at the last committee of council about the possibility of establishing a task force was mentioned, but, uh, nothing substantive was put forward. So it was just referred here for further consideration.
Okay, we can bring a task force later, later on if anybody wants to as well. Yep. So I have a motion by councillor Thur and seconded by councillor Vicente to receive, uh, the MTO Greater Golden Horseshoe Transportation Plan. All in favor? Okay, the motion carries. Now we have to deal with item six, public question period. Uh, is there any questions from the public? Is there any questions online from the public?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I do not see any. Just, uh, there are none.
We are now at the portion of the meeting dealing with adoption of city bylaws to give effect to council decisions made at this meeting. I have a motion moved by councillor.
Sorry.
Thank you, council. Congratulations to the newly elected council. I think it's great to see you guys. But under this current circumstance, I think it's, uh, it's concerning. Uh, I'm, I'm not sure if, uh, uh, council is willing to reconsider the ban on signage. Uh, I mean, I heard councillor Plessey talking about signs. It is important to understand the people that are affected more by, by this ban. Uh, like you earlier said, that signage were, uh, a nuisance and, uh, it does not necessarily impact, uh, people who vote. I would suggest that's not true. Uh, a lot of us don't have your, your name, your reputation. Just telling, uh, people who are planning and running an election and not to have signs. You said it's not a ban, but it is considered. You have people put signs on the side of the windows. It's not the same thing as having them displayed. And we all know, everybody that went through this election can tell, in terms of violation of, uh, of city bylaws regarding signage, I hate to say that a lot of our councillors are implicated in this, including the mayor. We saw signs everywhere on city boulevard, including yourself. You know, so to, 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 to assume that, uh, you're banning signs because of violations, I, I think it's, uh, it's thinking about it, uh, the wrong way. And I also want this council to understand that the people who are marginalized the most by this ban. You know, there's so many other communities that, that don't have this voice, that don't have the ability to be able to have themselves advertised here. Certain community are gonna be impacted significantly. The city is for everybody. We all should be able to, to, uh, uh, to be able to run for election and having, uh, uh, the ability to express ourselves and display signs. And I think even going on this route, it's somewhat undemocratic and you're encroaching on the rights, civil liberties of people. If the issue of signage has to do with election signs, how many people were ticketed or were given fines? The city can realistically enforce those signs. And I'll compare this also to banning of fireworks. You know, if they're infractions, enforce the bylaws. The question for council, that council has to ponder is how many people were ticketed with regards to violations of city bylaws? If we look at, uh, on the Wally Day with the fireworks. If you've exhausted those, uh, opportunities to find people, then you can say, well, let's now discuss what to do with this. But because they're infractions committed by a few segment of people, to totally prevent every other Bramptonian from being able to participate and enjoy these things is wrong. I think the same logic can be applied to signage. If they're infractions, enforce the bylaws. If there are no bylaw officers, hire more bylaw officers. Our great bylaw officers are trying. They're doing the best they can, but the city has to provide enough resources to support them so that they're able to discharge their jobs. But to just jump from point A to Z and say, well, because we're unable to enforce the bylaws satisfactorily, we're gonna ban it, I think one is undemocratic. Two, you're not, you're, you're denying every Bramptonians the ability to be able to enjoy something that we also cherish with regards to fireworks. Then with regards to election signs, you're preventing other people from being able to contest. That's democracy. So unfortunately, I don't think this is the right way, and I hope council can rethink this. Because you're marginalizing the originally marginalized. I don't believe the wrong thing.
Thank you. Thank you, Idris. Uh, if you could just give your name, uh, for the record. No, uh, behind you. Thank you. Uh, I don't see, uh, any, um, questions. So we are now on to the portion of the meeting dealing with adoption of city bylaws to give effect to council decisions made at this meeting. I have a motion moved by councillor Vicente and seconded by councillor, uh, Plessey to approve the bylaws. All in favor? Thank you. The motion carries. Uh, we don't have a closed, uh, session today, so we'll move on to confirming bylaw. Our next item of business is item nine, the confirming bylaw. I have a motion moved by councillor Thur and seconded by councillor Brar to approve the confirming bylaw to confirm the proceedings and decisions from the special meeting. All in favor? The motion carries. Our last item of business is item ten, adjournment. Uh, council is next scheduled to meet Wednesday, December fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, regular meeting. I have a motion moved by councillor Plessey and seconded by councillor Brar to adjourn today's meeting. All in favor? Thank you. The motion carries. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much.